Come on up, we'll get started.
Where'd they get?
I'm having to herd cats here.
Hi, Steve Johnson. Said herding cats, I said that's Steve Johnson. You'll appreciate that. One minute, who's our ROTC tonight? I can't tell who's here, you can't see them.
The Chair would entertain a motion to go back into open session.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to go into open session, any discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no. The Idell State Board of Education, open session for March 13th, 2017 is now in session. It is our policy to begin our meeting with a moment of silence, in which the board members, the staff, and guests may privately reflect in their own way on the business of this meeting, the business of educating our youth. Please take a moment of silence, thank you. Thank you. At this time, would everyone stand as the North Idell Junior ROTC presents the colors. Would everyone please join us in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which expands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Orange. Right, aye. Forward, march.
Thank you. Before we move into our agenda, I would like to clarify our public comment signup procedures. To be more aligned with our policy, but allow everyone the opportunity to speak, we will keep our public comment signup sheet out front until we are ready to open the floor for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak to the board must sign up prior to that time. There will be no additional signups after public comment starts. While the board welcomes our shareholders' views, please remember, comments should not be slanderous or personal in nature. To be fair to everyone, you will be limited to three minutes. Thank you. Mr. Johnson, are there any adjustments to our agenda?
You do have a new agenda in front of you, and Kelly made an adjustment to the dates, the upcoming dates, that's the only change to the agenda, but we do want you to make sure that you have that. And then at your place tonight, you've got some additional documents. There is a document that shows you the recommendations for the Facilities Task Force, which we'll be looking at tonight. You've also got an addendum to the Personnel Report that we just went over, and it looks like you have a new update for your high school exam policy. So just want to call your attention to those new documents in front of you.
Mr. Page?
Yes, sir.
We did discuss adding item I, which is Policy 3565-8307, the Title I comparability for second reading. We did first reading in February, and that just needs to be on the agenda.
Very good, we'll add for Agenda Item I, Policy 3565/8307, Title I program comparability of services. That'll be a second reading, will also need to be voted on, is that correct? Thank you. Board members, any other additions or adjustments to our agenda? The Chair will indicate, will take a motion at this time to approve the agenda as amended.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. Any discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The agenda is now approved. At this time, we would like to move into our consent agenda. Personnel, Dr. LaSagne.
Good evening, Mr. Page, Mr. Johnson, members of the board. You've had the opportunity to review the March Personnel Report, as well as the addendum to that report. Are there any questions on any of those items?
Just one, simple one. Is this recommendation in line with the law and our policies?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. LaSagne.
Thank you.
Board members, we have our minutes for February 6th and for February 13th on our consent agenda. Are there any questions or comments about those minutes? Very good, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, including the minutes. Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, any discussion on the consent agenda, including the approval of minutes? No?
Does that include the amendment on the Personnel?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure that was included.
That was as amended in our.
All right, thank you.
We have a motion, second, to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Very good, that is passed. We'll now move into the recognition section with Ms. Suzie Wyberg.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Well, this is the time of year, everyone who works at ADR is happy to walk down the hall because we have, hi Tiffany, we have our art shows going on. The first ones that we hit is the middle school and high school, and that coincides with our middle school and high school honors concert. So tonight, we have our art show winners from middle and high school. These amazing young students are taught by some really, really fabulous art instructors, and a few of them are here tonight, and I'm going to bring them up front with their kids and take pictures and embarrass the socks off of them. So the winning pieces get framed, and they go into a one-year rotation if the students allow us to. We move them around every three months between, I'm sorry, among Ray Street, ADR, and the Unity Center, so you can see all the framed artwork. And the pieces from this year will be taken down and returned to the students unless they're sold, because our students have sold artwork through our art show. So, here we go. For middle school, the first place winner is Ju Wan Park from Brawley Middle. Second place, Collaborative Weaving, which is very cool, and that's what's done by the boys, Susan, the boys in the discovery class at Troutman Middle. Third place goes to Preston Huffman from North Middle School. We have two honorable mentions, Emily Herr from East Middle and Shaylee Drake from West Middle. So if any of those students, and I know some of the instructors are here, if you will come up front, and Mr. Johnson, if you would mind getting the middle school certificates, some of them have checks and they all have ribbons, okay, here we go.
Tell you what, we'll let, we'll start down here at this end of the day, letting our board members go. Charles, I'm gonna let you try to spread this out. More pictures.
Recognize the town, Charles, recognize 12 middle school kids last Thursday. Why don't y'all put the student in the middle?
Thank you, and congratulations.
Now we have high school, and we do have some high school teachers here as well. These were also really amazing. I hesitate always dragging artwork around, especially when the weather is bad. I'm sorry you don't have them here to see them, but they will be framed, and you'll get to see them in all the buildings in the upcoming year. So in first place, we have Teresa Vu from South High. Second is Tyler Cook, Lake Norman High School. Third place is Alyssa McKenzie, Lake Norman High School. Two honorable mentions again, Celeste Sosa from South, and Ellery Pollard from South High. So, if you're he, yes ma'am? I'm sorry?
Ellery's from Lake Norman.
I made a mistake. Not the first one today. Ellery is from Lake Norman High School. So, if anyone is here, and can come up, and to be consistent, if I made a mistake.
Make sure you get the one with the money. That's the most important one.
Thank you, Ms. Wyberg.
You're welcome.
And now I believe we move to our non-consent agenda, and Ms. Wyberg, you're still up with the school calendar.
Oh, yay. So, we've had a lot of time to wait to see if we got any calendar flexibility, and seeing that we haven't, I'm bringing to you tonight the options we have all been working on and asking for whichever option the board pleases that we use for next year's academic calendar.
First off, thank you for all the work you've done, and we have been putting you off. We had hoped that we would get some relief from the state legislation legislators on our calendar, as we would really like to go to a calendar very similar to the community college. Everybody in education feels that would be beneficial for our students, but that's not happened yet, so I'll ask the board, I believe our preference was number four. Is there any discussion on which calendar we would like to go with?
Would you like a motion for option four? So move.
Have a motion for option four, is there a second, and a second? Any discussion?
Could you just reiterate for the audience, there was such a big percentage of, you had a lot of people invest with the voting, could you just kind of go over that?
We did, took a survey, had about 2,600 responses, and it was overwhelmingly, I think it was over 90% in favor of option four. And that would have been anyone that took the time to take the survey. It could have been parents, could have been students, might have been staff members.
The response was tremendous.
I think we would be remiss if we did not, you know, acknowledge that, so, thank you.
Just for the public's input, Calendar Four uses the 10 minutes, which was added to the time at the schools this year, and allows us to go to 176 days. State requires us to be in session for 1,025 seat hours. This calendar does that, and also will, I believe, allow us for a day or two of possible makeup if we need to. It does give our teachers some more workdays during the year, which they need badly, and it also gives us some more options with snow days, so I'm very pleased. This calendar is new, and everyone, or mostly everyone seems to enjoy the calendar, or like it much better. So we have a motion and a second to approve Calendar Number Four for 2017-18 school year. Any other discussion? Have a motion and a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The calendar is approved. Thank you, Ms. Wyberg.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, Ms. Wyberg, you're still here with the reinstatement of the workday that was brought up by Mr. Kelly.
Well, and I certainly understand the conversations that have taken place about this, and our issue would be that, as I mentioned in the memo, considering all instructional hours, including the March workday, we will end this year with 1,029.90 instructional hours if we have no further interruptions due to weather. So if we reinstated that day as a workday, we would lose 5.83 hours, that's our shortest day. It's 5.83 hours, so we would be out of compliance.
If, within this motion, we can always add that if we do lose more school days, that we would, it would not be, we have, till the end of March, I'm not expecting snow in April, but never know.
I know. We've dodged it some.
We can make a motion and contingent that if we don't need that day, it'll stay a workday.
The reason, the reason we're, it's on the agenda, back up to that just a second, because it had looked like since we added the time on the end of the days through this year, that we had the snow makeup days built in. Then when we missed two days, we took two of our workdays out to cover that, in the sense that at that particular time when we were having that loose discussion, we realized we had made one of those up, and we still had one more to go. And it was looking to a lot of people that, well, wait a minute, since we're making up that time in minutes, do we still have to have that as a snow makeup day? Why can we not revert that back to a workday, which as Mr. Page just said, is very valuable with our teachers? So, I was set to make a motion to do that, but you're saying that if we convert that day to a workday instead of a makeup day, that we would lose those five hours, and that would put us out of compliance? Now, there's still going to be a number of people with questions there because of the numbers, so would you, again, explain that difference in the numbers and everything?
Certainly. We have to take our shortest day and use the schools with the shortest day to calculate the number of hours, instructional hours. And then you remove the class change time and time that's taken for lunch that they count as non-instructional. We have to take away, I think my average is 2.75 hours for any early release day that comes off the total number of hours. So those schools, those four schools that go to school 5.83 hours a day are what we use for the district, because if one school's out of compliance, the whole district is out of compliance, according to the state. So, if we were to restore that March workday, and with that, at 1,029.90 hours, so basically 1,030 hours, we would be out of compliance if we gave that workday back and did not use it for student time. And we report this to the state once a year, and it's my name on it.
So we would be out of compliance by .1, is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm not real good at decimals and subtracting right in front of everybody, but 1.29.90 minus 5.83, that's what you, if. Yeah. So it's like .07 something.
What is, what is the amount that we're supposed to, how many hours are we?
1,025.
1,025.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
This says we're over.
1,025, and with that day, we have 1,029.
29.
Well, I think this is a moot point, I think we just.
Yeah, it's, yeah, that's, yeah, if that's the, I think the thing that everybody misses is that we're calculating on the schools that have the short days.
Mm-hmm, we have to.
They're calculating on the day that they're in, and if they do that, then they miss those days if they're not in those four schools. So, you know, there's no motion there. This is just on there for that clarification, that clarification that's made, I assume.
There's one other option, though, that we could, Mr. Chairman, that could be an early release day, and then you could have teacher trained, but Friday's not a good day for training, you're saying that 31st is a Friday.
No, well, let's not get, I mean, let's not throw any more monkey wrenches in the folder than we've already thrown in. Mr. Johnson, what's your opinion?
Well, I, in years past, we've always put that calendar out there early and told folks, this is our calendar plan accordingly for it. It was designated as a snow makeup day, I think folks have had a year to kind of build that in, and I know that the 10 minutes caused a lot of angst for a lot of people, but this is a great example. If we had not put those 10 minutes in there, we would have been majorly out of compliance in our school system. So my suggestion would be just leave it alone. That date, that date has been published for well over a year.
Absolutely.
And I think if we go changing the calendar randomly like this, it sends a signal to the community that we're not serious about our calendar, so I, my suggestion would be just leave it alone.
Well, it was, and I know probably other board members also have had many a call about that 10 minutes that was added. That has become quite important to some people, and.
Thank God we had one of the mildest winters we've ever had.
We, and let's say we are, Mr. Johnson, it is my understanding that the system will be increasing the four schools that are an issue next year, so that they are not affecting our other schools, is that correct?
We, of course, two of those schools are merging, there will be one alternative school, and yesterday we talked to you about a new transportation plan for that school. If we follow that plan, they should have plenty of time. The two remaining schools that run short of time are the two middle school IB programs, and we have not found a solution to that yet, but we are engaged in conversations with those principals, and trying to be creative and innovative with schedules. Now, a lot of those parents and a lot of those kids, if you talk about extending their day, they're all for it. They want more hours. So with that type of enthusiasm, I think there is some room there to creatively extend the days for those two schools next year.
I think we'll, we'll, we're gonna have to, just to keep this from, this type thing from happening. But I understand, I mean, the calendar's been out, it's a makeup day, so it's been a good discussion. Is the board interested in going further with this, or are we through? Well, it was a voting item, but if we, if there's no, if there's no motion to, if there's no motion made, then it's going to die because of lack of emotion. So the board is, the Chair has not heard a motion to continue, so at this point.
Mr. Chairman. I just want clarification, so next school year, this is not about the, the workday, but about the 10 minutes extra, all the schools except for the alternative schools and the IB middle schools, is that what I'm hearing?
All those, all those schools will have the 10 minutes built in next year. That's the only way that you can reduce the number of days from 180 to 176.
So everybody, all schools will be in compliance with the extra 10 minutes?
That's correct.
I've not heard a motion on this, so I would say this dies for lack of interest. We'll move on to the next agenda item.
So March 31st.
Thank you. Yes, March 34th has not changed, it is a snow makeup day.
Oh, by the way, one other thing on that, thank you, Ms. Wyberg.
He beat me to it, thank you, Ms. Wyberg. We'll move on to Monticello School property, Dr. Miller.
Yes, sir, Chairman Page, members of the board, Mr. Johnson. We're requesting that Monticello School be put up for sale with the combination of Monticello and Presley, that property will, is one of the worst properties we have as far as the physical plant, but it is a good property for commercial. One of the due diligence things we have to do is we have to offer it to the county. I am requesting permission to submit a letter to the county offering it to them at tax value or at appraised value, should they wish to have it appraised. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions, Dr. Miller? The Chair would entertain a motion.
Motion, Mr. Chairman, let Dr. Miller move ahead.
Second.
Have a motion, second, to allow Dr. Miller to continue with checking into selling the Monticello School property. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no. Unanimously carries. Thank you. Dr. Miller, you've got the next one with the Woodland Heights Cell Tower.
Yes, sir. We were approached about six months ago by Cell Tower Company, who is looking to place a cell tower in the area of, of Brawley Peninsula, and Woodland Heights was the ideal location. This has been brought to the board several times for their disposition. We have a contract now, the cell tower will be located on the Woodland Heights property in an area that is not usable for us. The company would incur all cost associated with the building. The company would incur all costs associated with the building and the maintenance and upkeep of the cell tower. They will pay the school system a, an amount monthly and also a due diligence amount in their option. And I would recommend that we accept this lease agreement. Uh, it has been vetted by our attorney, and everything seems to be in order. We also have, uh, Cabarrus County, who is a like-lease agreement, almost an exact duplicate that, uh, indicated to us that they were very satisfied with the company. Be glad to answer questions.
Mr. Scutay, any comments from you, sir, on the legality of this?
Uh, the legality's fine. I just wanted to comment, it was brought up yesterday about the rental income, and I just wanted to make the board aware that they have basically a two-year option period to continue to investigate, so they won't, they won't be paying rent immediately until such time as they decide to exercise that option. So, it could be as much as two years before the, the real monthly income starts coming in. But otherwise, I think it's in order. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Dr. Miller, uh, does, is the tower, I look at this picture, is it where the two red lines intersect? Is that where the...
Actually, it's where the yellow box is located.
Okay, okay.
The, um, the location you see with the red lines is actually an existing wide-area network pole. You've seen them on our campuses.
Right.
Which is no longer in use.
Okay.
They did look at that as a potential, but that is, is actually owned by Conterra, which is a company we, we deal with.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve the Woodland Heights Elementary Cell Tower.
I'll make a motion. We accept this?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any other questions? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Miller. Ms. White, you want to talk to us about the audit contract?
Good evening. Um, I bring forward a request to suspend policy 8310, which calls for, um, every three years, we solicit a bid for our external financial audit. Um, the reason being is I don't think that we'll see a change in auditors by going through the bidding process. We currently use Coffey Lovins, which is located in Statesville on Center Street. They've been our auditors for three years. The fees are detailed in the memo. From earliest discussions with them, they would propose to not raise our fee next year and to have just a minimal increase for the following year. Um, I've put comparably sized units, um, audit fees for your comparison. Those are dated, those are for the 1415 school year. That's the latest information available on the LGC's website. We've been pleased with the services that have been provided by Coffey Lovins, and we would like to continue that, foregoing the audit, or I'm sorry, the RFP process. Be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Ms. White. Any questions for Ms. White?
Ms. White, um, the four that you quoted, the four, uh, other districts, you said there was one company that could, but because of, um, I guess relatives or nepotism, you can't use that one. Are they, is that company serving, um, these four?
No, I, I know that company does Alamance Burlington. Um, they do not do Rowan Salisbury. Not sure about the other two, to be honest, Harnett or Davidson County. I'm not sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Harnett County's too far away, probably.
The, uh, chair would, uh, entertain a motion to approve the audit contract?
I want a clarification, Mr. Chairman. Do we need a motion to suspend policy 8310 first and then have a motion?
Uh, thank you. This is not actually the audit contract, it's to suspend the policy, and then we bring forward a contract later.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you for correcting that. Yes, sir, that's what, we would look for the motion to, uh, suspend...
Consolidate, or for, or two separate motions?
I think the contract's not here yet, according to her, so what we're going to do is just suspend policy 8310 tonight to allow her to go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we suspend policy 8310.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion to suspend policy 8310. Uh, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, this takes a two-thirds majority, so we've got five out of seven, so we still have that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we, um, adopt the audit contract as presented.
Don't have an audit contract.
She doesn't have a contract yet.
I have a jet.
Well, the, uh, I guess, what do you want to say, in the contract itself, the...
This allows her to go forward and get us a contract.
Okay.
Contract back.
I thought you needed to have the money locked down, is what I was saying, you needed...
I just need the board to allow me to not put the audit out for bid, because policy calls for a bid every three years. So, I'm just asking for the board to suspend that portion of the policy, and if that happens, then I'll bring forward a contract with our current auditors. If not, then I'll put it out for bid and see what happens.
Mind that, for the lack of a say. No problem.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Ms. White. Now, we have a, uh, non-voting item. Uh, you're going to present the budget.
Well, this is really just for informational purposes. This is what was presented to, um, the county commissioners as our request for current expense funding. I believe the plan is to have a public hearing on the budget next month. This is, like I said, just for informational purposes, to show that we requested a 9% increase of, you know, we requested an increase of $3 million, and all the details, the line item details of the budget are, um, included in the packet.
I just had a quick question. Why did we not, um, propose the funding increase plus the budget reductions needed?
Um, I guess I'm not real clear on the question?
Well, we've got the funding increase, the 3.1 million dollars that we're requesting for the, um, from the county commissioners, and then we're still going to need some budget reductions.
Well, we, if you look at this sheet right here, and if you scroll on up, Kelly, you can see the bottom half of that. This is for our internal purposes. This worksheet was for our internal purposes. That bottom half below the line did not go to the county. So, the county didn't see that bottom half, and I think that we, the, the board, um, at the Cal meeting, um, approved moving forward with the request, the full request, without reducing for any potential, without reducing because we think we're going to get less. You know, we think maybe we'll only get about 3% increase, and the board gave instructions to go ahead and move forward with the full request, and then whenever we get, we'll work forward, um, making some reductions. Is that why you're asking me?
Well, I'm just wondering why we didn't include what we needed.
We did.
Well, I mean, if we still... Well, and I guess maybe I'm not understanding, because I, I'm looking at it as we're requesting funding, but we're still going to have to look at, at some budget reductions.
No, no. If we get 3.1 million, we have a balanced budget, there's no reductions.
Okay. Okay. Well, okay.
The bottom half is if we don't get the 3.1 million.
Right.
Well, in all our discussions with the county, we're pretty sure where we're, what we're going to get is, it's not going to be that, so, uh...
And like I said, the county did not get the bottom half of this. They just got the top half, and the detail shows that, um, we're requesting 3.0, or 37.9 million, which would be a 3.1 million dollar increase. We would use no fund balance per se. You know, we don't have a state budget yet, so we, we don't know really.
Okay. I just looked at it wrong.
I can see where it's confusing, sure.
Yeah. Sorry.
Boys, it's important to remind everybody, too, that we do not know what's going to happen with the legislation concerning K3 class sizes. Uh, we don't know if that's going to be 12 teachers or 63 teachers. So, that is not in your budget. And as soon as the General Assembly, uh, addresses that, uh, we will communicate with the county commissioners and, of course, and you folks, too. Based on what you would like for us to do, uh, on, on whatever action the General Assembly takes, it might be that we have to go back to the county again and adjust this and say, here's an unfunded mandate from the General Assembly.
Well, we've met with the county several times, and they've seen, they've seen all our figures, so it's not a, not a surprise to them what, what we're doing. It's just, uh, very tight financially. Uh, we also don't know the raises. That's a guess, the best guess Ms. White can make at this time. That could easily be more, which could also increase it. So, it looks like it's going to be a lean year, uh, financially for our system, and some hard choices will have to be made, and I hope the public understands that.
I asked, uh, I asked a question, too, just off, well, from Dr. Obstein, uh, should the state make that foolish move in reference to the class reduction? Do we have 63 teachers waiting in the wing to come in and take those?
That's what I answered, no.
So, was that a, was that a no?
Yeah, everybody here is sitting right here, get it hired.
I thought that was the case. That was more than...
Get the right here and get hired, Sam.
That was a no. That was a no. Thank you.
Right. Imagine that number multiplied times 115 school systems. So, you're talking about thousands of teachers.
I know it's an open comment, but we have a shortage, they have a shortage, everybody in the state has a shortage, and for somebody to do that at this point, I'll stop right there.
Well, as, as usual, we're at the mercy of the state when, uh, on their, uh, unfunded mandates and the amount of money that they provide to us makes it rather difficult for us to operate. We wish it wasn't that way, but that's the way it is. Any other comments for Ms. White on the proposed 1718 budget? Thank you, Ms. White. This time, uh, we'll move over to nominations facilities task force. Dr. Miller asked us to, uh, oh, tearing something up.
Play your names like them.
Asked us to, uh, uh, get one person from the north, south, east, west, and then the Statesville area. I have put before you five names, uh, from south, Jennifer Christian, from north, Ed Schenevy, east, Chris Shubridge, west, Darrell Watt, from Statesville, Mary Wilson Palms. The chair would entertain a motion to nominate these people for the facilities task force or discussion on such.
Does that move, Mr. Chairman?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you, Mr. Dr. Miller. You've got your task force nominees. Thank you. Uh, policy 3415, Dr. Taylor, and we'll go ahead and do policy 35658307 also while you've got the floor, and we can vote on them individually or together, however you would like.
One is a first reading, one is a second reading, so...
Very good. And we're just going to vote on the second.
Vote on the second one.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Page, members of the board, uh, policy 3415, high school exams. These are not changes that are coming to us from the state. Rather, these are just some minor tweaks and wording to the policy based on feedback from our high school principals to make the policy more in line with actual processes that we have. Note, um, all of the high school exams, uh, the state gives us guidelines that those are given during the final five days of the semester per state policy. Uh, and the main thing that is changed in this policy is just clarifying in item number seven, that attendance is taken on exam days, uh, whether or not the students are taking exams or attending that review session. Attendance is taken those days, so if students are absent, they are counted absent on those days. So, just to clarify that process and policy.
Is this a policy our principals wanted?
Yes. Um, we got feedback from them at the Wednesday principal meeting, but this actually came to us from, um, one of our high schools. And so, they all gave us feedback on this Wednesday.
So, if these students show up for class and they don't have an exam that day, what are, what are they going to be doing in class?
So, there are, there are exam review periods during that week, and if they don't have an exam review period, then they can come, but as long as they're there for at least half of the day, then they are accounted present for that day. They may be absent for the second part of the period, um, in the second half of the day. And principals do have, uh, some leeway in, in not having students to make up that time. Um, but the, regardless if the students aren't there for the full day, then they are counted absent. And that was, um, I think, one of the issues, um, that was coming into question, was a student didn't have, uh, any exams or didn't have something for part of that day, and so they didn't want to come to school, but also did not want to be counted absent, even though the, the school was not requiring them to make up that time. If they weren't in school, then they're, have to be considered absent.
Okay, so...
Legal record of their attendance.
So, I just want to make sure, so the students don't, they don't absolutely have to show up those days.
If they...
But if they don't, they will be counted absent, but it's, it's not absolutely required that they be there.
The principals have the leeway to not require make up time for those days.
That's up to the principals.
If the students are not in those exam periods.
Okay.
What, what's the purpose, and why are we making this change?
Uh, part of the reason is it was, um, a question about, uh, whether or not a student was to be counted absent, uh, when they were not in school. And so, to make that clear in the policy, the principal said, just make it clear that attendance is taken on exam days, uh, whether the students are in exams or not, because attendance has to be a legal record of their attendance. They are either here or they're not. It's a yes or a no. It's not a maybe. And if they are not here because they don't have any exams, that's fine, but, um, you know, so the principals can, can not make them make up that time, because students have to, if they miss so many days at the high school level, there's some make up requirements to make up some of their time requirements. And so, um, principals have some discretion in whether or not that time is made up. And certainly, they wouldn't during those exam periods if the students did not have an exam.
Does this affect their perfect attendance?
If they are absent, then they are absent.
Okay. I know we use a lot of Fridays after exams as a makeup exam day. So, this requires them to come that day also?
And I'm going to defer to Mr. Gentle back there, but...
Yeah, it's, here's, answer your question, yes. So, that Friday typically, depending on how it's involved, um, we run a regular poll by people on this day in the school calendar, so we're obligated to think of it. Um, the reality is, you know, some schools hand out second semester schedules that day, there's different things. There are makeup exams going on, um, but we, we follow the, the policy of if you're present, if you're there, you can have...
So, we're asking, we're, we're making kids come to school that have absolutely nothing to do at school that day. Is that correct?
True.
That would be a reasonable...
Is this a state law we're trying to obey, or is this a local policy we're obeying?
Um, I, what I believe and understand is that if, if there's a day of school on the calendar, we're obligated to make accurate attendance, so we take attention.
The state requires that exams be given within that last five days, so you could run exams the last four of those five days, um, but then makeups would have to take place, um, at another point in time, whether or not that was really starting in, then, within that second semester. So, it's, it's kind of just a scheduling issue of, with those four days of exams, then how do you get that in and still do makeups, because, you know, students are absent for a variety of, of different reasons. And like, um, I think Mr. Gentle said, different high schools kind of handle that differently as to what that day looks like.
Well, I mean, I've taught 38 years in high school, and I know that last Friday...
It's tough.
It's, it's, it's just ridiculous that we're, we're doing this to our, our kids, and it could cost them a perfect attendance or, or make them do stuff when they have to come to school, and there's absolutely no reason at all they're coming to school. So, my question, Mr. Johnson, is this a state? Are we having to do this because of a state, or is this our system's policy?
We are complying with the state attendance law, and this last five days is required to give our exams. Now, we've had many discussions about getting flexibility from the state and being creative and innovative with our kids. We've challenged our principals to, to start thinking about out-of-the-box, uh, ideas. You know, just a few weeks ago, we saw kids working almost a full day on Saturday, came in on their own time with their teacher. And why could that not be counted as a day of school for those kids? Um, I think moving forward, we're going to have to try to be creative and innovative, and I've, I've told folks for a couple of years now that the old model of school, that you got to be there from 7:30 in the morning to 3:30 in the afternoon, and you got to come Monday through Friday, and you got to come from August to, to June, we, we need to rethink all of that. But for the time being, uh, given what the rules that we have to play with, I think this is, this is, uh, putting us in compliance with state reg, regulations.
And this tweak in policy just clarifies the process that is and has been in place.
One to me, too, you're, you've got resources there that you're having to utilize, whereas you might not have to. I mean, you've got to have a teacher... whereas you might not have to, I mean, you've gotta have a teacher on site to man those kids, they just can't wander the halls, so they're sitting there, and the kids are sitting there particularly with nothing to do for half a day conceivably, unless they get a waiver or something, a flag off from the principal, it's, um, I, I hate those days, I hate those days, and I hate that as a parent, too, because you want, you want your kids to be in compliance, but at the same time, I'm looking at it going, oh my gosh, this is the biggest waste of time.
Well, and for the four days that the students have exams, as long as they are there for the half of the day, they are counted present, um, the requirements are, they have to be there for at least half a day to be counted present on that day.
So, if they have an exam, of course.
Right.
But if they don't?
And, and for the most part, they have exams for those four days, uh, because there are very, very few exemptions, um, only it's seniors, um, that meet certain criterias can be exempt from exams, and pretty much with North Carolina final exams and CTE exams, uh, AOGs, there are pretty much exams in all of the courses that those students have to take.
Do our AP students have to come back and take an exam after they take the AP test?
The AP tests, they do not have another final exam other than the AP exam, do the teachers give?
Uh, it's very, uh, some of our project face learning, we'll say the exam is done, um, it's, it's, I can do very, of course, of course, uh, so, it's, 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 um, we require them to give them a exam at the end of the first semester, it's the two part fours at the end, um, they do have some flexibility to project presentations on their exam, but if they're absent on the exam today, counted absent for attendance.
And that's not waivable by the principal, yet the principal can waive and change grades, I mean, I'm just asking, 'cause I mean, I know what, I know where we're at with this, and, and I'm not fussing, it's, it's a law, and, or rules and regulations and policies, it's just, you guys know that, it's just foolish that we're making our kids do this stuff when, when, uh, it's, it's absolutely nothing, I mean, why are we doing it, is my question, uh, I know, uh, Charles has asked many times why we do some of the things, just because they tell us to do it, and then we all decided we didn't look good in stripes, so.
Well, and, and some of the students know that they can save their absences, and, you know, if they've done their exams and they've got absences, if they don't have to make up time, they can, they can not come to school on that Friday, they're still counted absent, because they're, that has to be a legal record of whether or not they're in school or not, um, and certainly we want to make sure we do that, let's say, for example, a student was supposed to be in school on Friday and went out and robbed a bank, but the attendance records didn't indicate that they weren't in school on that Friday of, of review or exam makeups, uh, so we have to have legal records for, you know, whether or not the students are there or not, but as I said, the principals do have some leeway and flexibility in whether or not the students are required to make up any of that time.
Well, I understand that, and I'm, I'm done preaching, I'm just trying to, uh, look at it from a practical standpoint.
I understand.
Uh, Mr. Johnson, I, you and I have discussed alternate ways of.
Dr. Taylor, does this include the early colleges, uh, high schools, too?
Early colleges have, uh, a totally different, um, rules as far as attendance, make up time requirement, uh, they have a different set of rules, so this would be mainly for traditional high schools, they still have to take attendance and those kinds of things, um, but their, their schedules are a little different than our, this traditional schedule, but they would still have those attendance components.
Any other comments?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, respectfully, there has to be a last day, and, you know, I, I know there's no good reason, but that's been a problem for schoolteachers from, since the beginning of time, so, you know, there's gonna be a last day, and it's, just, I guess you say, just deal with it.
You know, I guess so, I just, I just, when I see things that we do because we just do it that way, that's never been a good answer, I think, I think we, uh, just because it's always been done that way, but it's probably gonna always be done that way, so, but, uh, just trying to figure out if we could do something a little different, thank you.
This is first reading on the exam schedule.
This is, this is first reading on policy thirty-four fifteen, so the other policy that I have was thirty-five sixty-five eighty-three oh seven, this is the Title I Program Comparability of Services, we did present this, um, policy in February for a first reading, this is a new policy that has come down from the state, um, and so we would recommend adopting this policy as it was presented, uh, in the past, Title I, as part of the Title I Audit and the Title I Checks and Balances, uh, the Title I Program Director and Melissa Wyke have to present a report to the state that ensures that we have, uh, comparability, maintenance of effort, and all of the components that are in this plan, so we have already been meeting these requirements for many, many years, but now the, the rules have changed, and we have to have a board policy in place, um, that, that outlines the Title I comparability, so this is a required policy from the School Boards Association.
Even though, even though notes say first reading, you want this voted on tonight?
This is actually a second reading, we brought this forward, uh, yeah, we brought this forward in.
Everything we got says first reading.
I think, I think the one you've got there is the February one, I gave out an, an updated one yesterday that was for the March.
Uh, Chair, inter, uh, motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we, um, adopt the policy thirty-five sixty-five slash eighty-three oh seven as presented.
Have a sec, have a motion and a second, to adopt policy thirty-five sixty-five and eighty-three oh seven, any other comments? All in favor, aye. Oppose, no, motion carries and answers, thank you, Dr. Taylor. Uh, we've come to our time, uh, Dr. Miller, if you'll bring us our, uh, uh, caught him asleep back there, it's our public comments se- session, if anyone has not signed up and would like to sign up, just grab. It's not us, Canada, we're out of country, we don't have to, yeah, very good, thank you, thank you very much, we have, uh, West Iredale parent, April Anderson, Ms. Anderson, you have, uh, three minutes, and thank you very much, please state your name, and, uh...
Good evening, my name is April Anderson, and I would like to thank everyone for allowing me the time to stand here and, and give this speech. Um, the school system needs to be reconstructed into the old ways of teaching so that we have productive young adults coming into society, we start with a technology only allowing forty-five minutes to an hour in a, a computer class, no electronical devices are allowed in classes, students will have access to the internet only in computer class, no cell phones for students or employees, laptops stay in school, in school in computer classes only, no watches, no electronical devices of any kind, the basics, books, paper, pencils, and crayons, parents need to realize too much technology can and does affect the students, students, studies have shown the effect it has on children, examples, physically their bodies, psychologically their minds, materi- uh, materialistically, money, their pocketbook, by eliminating electronical devices, it allows the students to focus on their studies, communication skills, and how to coexist with different cultures and personalities, the students will be able to learn without any disturbances, the students will come into the workforce knowing how to function in society with respect, communication skills, and knowledge, therefore, we are accomplishing peace, balance, and unity in our communities, and making our country stronger, once a student has completed high school and continues on to college to further their education, they can be trusted with knowledge, then the student has earned the right, because we know that knowledge is power, and this country cannot afford for that to be put into the wrong hands, by establishing this into all school districts, this allows each district to save money, therefore, we can invest the money into our teachers, which they deserve it, and our students deserve their education, ultimately, we get productive young adults coming into society with the tools they need to thrive in life, everyone is being treated equally, no one is being, uh, discriminated, everyone will be able to coexist because they've been taught the different cultures and personalities, no child left behind, the district needs to come together and rebuild our school system, because our children are our future, we will regain stronger communities and a country that stands with victory, this country will stand with respect, knowledge, and power, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, ultimately, we the people have abided by the Constitution of the United States of America, now, I attended a school here in North Carolina that was established in the year eighteen fifty, and they followed this structure, and it works, in Native American culture, we dance for praying, but look, we're not gonna dance tonight, let's bow our heads and pray, I hope I don't offend anyone, dear Lord, our heavenly Father, please wrap your love around our home, this country, and do as you see fit to protect our water, food source, and all medical employees, and your precious children, please, Father, save us and deliver us from all evil, we love you and thank you for all you have done and will continue to do, God bless America, amen, amenah.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you for letting me speak.
Since I have no other public comments, we'll move to board member comments, board members?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, um, when we vote on issues from meeting to meeting, uh, and we have parent comments or civilian comments after we vote, I think we need to look at, maybe there might be an issue from time to time that a, a parent or taxpayer wants to comment on, and we've already voted, so maybe we need to look at, um, anyone making a comment on what we might be voting on for that particular meeting, it may lengthen our meetings, but at the same time, I think that, uh, the taxpayers have a right to have input, thank you.
And I, I will say, in the past, we have, uh, done that when we have people that were speaking on, uh, but it's not been a policy perhaps, if we, later on, we can discuss a policy, but, um, there are times that you're absolutely correct.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, I have some comments, um, this past year, since we, I mean, past year, since last month, it's been a busy month, I know for a lot of us, um, Reed, let's see, I went to Sharon, uh, School on the Reed Across America, um, Principal Humphreys had, um, uh, invited me last year, and I wasn't able to go because I went to Cloverleaf, um, but, do we have a picture of the, um, the staff, the Sharon staff?
Very, very dark, you couldn't make it out, so I, I, that's why I ended up.
Well, they sent me this really nice card, 'cause I kinda showed up after I'd gone to Cloverleaf, uh, Principal Humphreys was so, um, gracious, he, he walked me all through the, um, his school, and I was able to read to the fourth grade, um, that day, and they were, um, very good, um, attentive, and then, but earlier, I went to Cloverleaf Elementary, um, School, um, the Statesville Women's Club invites us, um, I think they invite everybody that can come, and, uh, so I went, and I was assigned to Ms. Nettles' fourth grade, uh, class, um, and Jane Hudson, the librarian, I had brought a couple of books, but she gave me another book that would be appropriate for fourth grade, so thank you, Ms. Hudson, for that, um, I got, one morning, I woke, I went to my mailbox, and I had, um, a whole handmade thank you note, so I, thank you, Ms. Nettles, fourth grade class, um, uh, one of them took, did you do the other one?
No, let me go and get to that.
Yeah, I like this other one, because this, this little person, uh, she, she or he drew me, and, and it was, it looked good, I wish I actually looked like this, but, see, there I am, I, my glasses are on top, so I think.
Sure they usually are.
Wish I did look like that.
My mother.
But, um, I just wanna shout out to, uh, the schools for inviting us, oh, and FFA can, uh, banquet, we went, um, to the, um, oh, what's it called, on Bristol Drive, the, um, Ag Center, all the FA, FFA clubs were there, it was hosted by North Iredale High Schools, but Statesville High, uh, their first year was this year, and they were there, I'm so darn proud of them, uh, they didn't have jackets, but next year, they're gonna have jackets, if me and Keith have to buy every one of them a jacket, so, thank y'all.
Write that down, Mr. Johnson, we've got jackets bought for next year, be sure you get that.
Well, I, I didn't have any comments, but I was at Cloverleaf also, and we had a real good representation affair, and I didn't bring mine, but they gave me a plaque with all the children's names signed on it, too, and so, uh, Ms. Emery was a teacher, and they did a great job at Cloverleaf, so.
Well, I think if, if the public just knew the things our school systems do in Iredale County, it is absolutely amazing, uh, and when you go to our schools and visit them, you realize our children are learning so much, and, uh, we, we don't have any failing schools, we got the greatest schools in, in, in the state, and some of the greatest schools in the nation, uh, I, I don't think the people of Iredale County have any idea how great what Iredale Statesville Schools do, and, uh, it, it's just a pleasure to be able to, uh, go and visit these schools and see some of the great, great things going on, any other board comments? Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Page, members of the board, uh, well, as you know, uh, North Iredale Agricultural and Science Early College is set to open July the first, and, um, we have been very busy, uh, planning, uh, what that school is gonna be looking like, and, uh, we're really, uh, excited that we have over four hundred and thirty applicants for the freshman class of all three of our early colleges, including the North Iredale Agricultural and Science Early College, so I really think we've tapped into a, a market there that is of interest to our parents and our kids throughout the entire community, and we've been in the early college business now for quite a few years, our two existing early colleges, CCTL and Crossroads, you see the test scores and the results that they get, it's just phenomenal what they're doing for children, so, um, you did give us permission to move ahead with hiring a principal, uh, for our newest school, and, uh, tonight, you approved, uh, Mr. Billy Wells, and so, Mr. Wells, if you'll stand up back there, I wanna give everybody a, a chance to give you a good looking over, and I want to share a couple things from his resume.
Coming from Ford.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr., oh, you gotta stand up now, the whole time.
Come on, make him come on up front, so we can, you can't only see from the lights.
Yeah, he's a handsome young man. Um, Mr. Wells is a native of the North Iredale community, and actually graduated from North Iredale High School, after finishing high school, he completed his Bachelor of Science in Mathematics at the University of North Carolina at Greensboro, he went on to receive a Master's Degree in Science and Management from Purdue University, and he wasn't finished then, he got a second Master's Degree, um, in Project Management from George Washington University in Washington, DC, in twenty fourteen, Mr. Wells received his, uh, School Administrative Licensor through Gardner Webb University here in Statesville, um, he began his career working for AT&T, uh, he was a project manager for them for twenty-plus years, and had a quite a, quite a bit of, uh, experience managing projects, team leadership, uh, corporate software development, uh, he was in charge of hiring and firing and planning and balancing budgets, and had a very, very successful career in the tech industry, Mr. Wells came to work for us as a math teacher at, at West Iredale High School in March of two thousand six, he went on from there, uh, to work at North Iredale High School, where he was a business information technology and marketing teacher, and then moved into the position as the Career Development Coordinator at North Iredale High School, this year, Mr. Wells has served as Assistant Principal at North Iredale High School, and is currently at Lake Shore Middle School, uh, he's very, very excited about his new assignment, and there's not many people that get to actually say that you are the sole employee of the school right now, but over these next few months, uh, his first assignment will be to select his freshman cohort of students, which will be about a hundred plus students, and to begin hiring the staff, and have all of this ready and ready to roll, uh, July first, or, or, or later in the summer, but, Mr. Wells, we do wanna congratulate you on this new assignment, um, and wish you well, uh, as you shepherd our newest school in the Iredale Statesville, uh, School District, congratulations.
Yes, sir.
Come on, come on, shake, I like shake, come on.
Is it hard if I, if I say something for just one?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
All right, well, first off, uh, since you, since you stated it that way, I would like to say, staff satisfaction at the new school is just one hundred.
Mark that down.
I am very happy, and while, that's what I've done in the past, it's happened. I am very happy, and while that's what I've done in the past, sounds a little interesting, but what I'm really excited about is what I'm going to have to do next few years. I really feel like my passion is coming to bear me for this, and I look forward to it, and I am very excited. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, you know, I often tell people that if you have a blue day in education and you think the going's tough and whatnot, find you a school and go sit down and talk to some kids, and they will automatically cheer you up and remind you why you're in this business. So here's just a couple scenes from around our district. Don't have a lot this month to share, but kindergarten registration is underway, believe it or not. We're bringing in our next cohort of students, and so for the next several weeks and on into the late spring, we will be recruiting kids from throughout Iredale County and beyond to join our kindergarten ranks. And I do want to highlight that young man. That is one of our principals down on the southern end of the county, Lake Norman Elementary School. He hosted a preschool director's information session and invited the other elementary schools to come to his school that day to meet with these directors of the preschools on that end of the county. That's Mr. Mark Shinkarick. The event was very well attended, and I hope that we can replicate that in other areas of the community. The directors that attended that day were given tours of the school. They were exposed to the curriculum. We just plugged what we do in kindergarten, and so many of those folks went back to their prospective preschools and shared that information with parents. Lots of brochures and whatnot were distributed to prospective parents that day. I just thought it was a very, very unique idea, and it certainly is embracing this concept of marketing our school system. And so, again, kudos to Mr. Shinkarick and all of the principals on the southern end of the county that participated. Reed Across America. Ms. Hayes has already mentioned that one. These are some scenes from across our district. It's a huge event every single year, and I just encourage everybody to participate. I was scheduled to go to Cloverleaf this year and had a conflict with the county commissioners wanting to meet to talk about the budget, so I figured I'd better go talk about the budget. So I missed it this year. As a hint to you, if you do go participate in Reed Across America, take your own book and practice, and be careful about those Dr. Seuss books because they are tongue-twisters. I embarrassed myself the first year I participated. And that's just some more scenes there. Want to give a little shout-out tonight to East Iredale Elementary School. And you just keep hearing the best things about East Iredale Elementary School, don't you? East Iredale was recently named, just this month, a lighthouse school here in the United States. There are two thousand eight hundred schools worldwide that participated in the Leader in Me program. There were two hundred and seventy-four schools nationwide that were selected. Or that's probably internationally, too, and East Iredale Elementary School is one of those two hundred and seventy-four. And I do want to thank the board for your support. We have three schools that are Leader in Me schools, but this lighthouse distinction is quite an achievement for that school, and we want to congratulate them. South Iredale High School. I tell you what, if you want to see action in motion, go down to South Iredale High School. What you see there, and those are not the best photographs, but the ROTC building down there was demolished as part of the construction project that's taking place down there. So those guys have been moved into a mega unit, and so there's Master Sergeant Fisher working with kids on tiling the restrooms in that mega unit down there. And so can't wait to see what this looks like, but it is an all-hands-on-deck approach, and they're getting some amazing results from those students. Susie Weigberg hosts an event each year called Youth Leadership, and the kids... It's a very competitive process to be selected to be in this group, and then throughout the school year, each month, this group gets to participate in all types of activities throughout the community. Here is March the eighth, where the students are participating over at City Hall in balancing the city budget. And it's my understanding, Susie, that they did balance the budget and had to make some tough cuts and whatnot.
Can we get them over here to... Can you bring them over here to help us?
Absolutely. We may want to invite these kids to come in and help us out.
Mayor's job, easy, doesn't it?
The next slide, please. That picture doesn't do justice to the event. You can see that there are hundred-plus kids up there in that All-County chorus that performed recently over at Western Avenue Baptist Church. One of our big partners sponsors that event for us each year and lets us use their facility. And I tell you, the music that these kids produce is first-class. I'm not sure that we record that and post that online. I don't know if we even can do that.
You can record it, but we don't post it.
Yeah. But I wish every citizen in this community could hear that choir. That is the best of the best from all of our high schools that's on stage. The middle school also performed that night. And the next slide gives you the next installment. This is the All-County Elementary Honors Course, which is scheduled for March the twenty-fifth. And, Susie, where's the venue for that?
The McGrath.
McGrath Auditorium. There's something powerful about these young voices singing, and I encourage you to come and be part of that. The next slide also, we have a district chess tournament coming up on March the thirtieth. Is that at the Unity Center? I believe it is. And again, it's just a delightful day to bring a lot of kids from all over the school system together, and there are some smart young'uns at those chess tournaments. I wouldn't be about to sit down at the table with one of them because they would embarrass me. But lots of great things going on in the school system. The next portion of tonight's presentation, we have encouraged our principals to market their schools, and so they're being really creative and innovative with that challenge. And so we're going to show you a couple clips here of some current students and some alumni of our schools who have been asked to do some marketing presentations for us. Some of these are students, some are parents, but some pretty powerful thing for a bunch of amateurs that are engaged in marketing for the first time. Take a look at a couple of these clips, and I think you'll catch the flavor of what's going on.
Hello, my name is Jeff Stormant. This is my wife Natalie Stormant, our son TJ Stormant. I graduated last year in 2016. We're very proud parents, and we want to tell you a little bit about his success and what the Iredale Statesville School System did for him.
TJ was able to go through the AP Academy at Statesville High School. Through that, he also did some dual enrollment at Mitchell his senior year and was able to go on and take some early college courses. Because of that, after just twelve months in college, he's almost fifty percent done with his undergraduate degree because of all the classes that transferred through the AP program and through the dual enrollments that really allowed him to have not only a head start on the learning environment that he would need to be successful in college, but also to have some credits when he got there. And he was able to make Dean's List his first year, the three-six GPA his first semester. And we believe a lot of that was from the foundation that he did receive at Statesville High School.
And athletically, he also was able to earn a full scholarship to Old Dominion University playing conference USA football, and is actually challenging for a starting position this year. So we're extremely proud of him. Something else we're extremely proud of him with is his faith in the Lord Jesus Christ, and he's actually teaching a Bible study at his school with his football players and actually had... How many of them Friday night?
Five Salvations Friday.
Five Salvations Friday night. So we're extremely proud of him and the young man he's turned into, and we owe a lot of that to Iredale Statesville Schools.
Hi, my name is Caroline McMurray, and I'm a 2013 graduate of Statesville High School. I'm currently a senior at the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill, pursuing a double major in Sport Administration and American History. My time at Statesville High School is something that I will always treasure. The teachers and faculty that surrounded me always had my best interest at heart, and many of the relationships still remain true today. They acted as a segue for my confidence to help build relationships with professors at the collegiate level. Another thing that was always important to me that helped me have a better outlook on life itself was working in a diverse environment. This allowed me to be able to be ready and willing to handle any situation that came my way. I highly recommend Statesville High School as your choice for public education.
I'm Susan Phail. I'm the principal of Cottle Creek Elementary. What makes Cottle Creek so awesome? Let me just tell you this. When your kids come into our building, they're treated as individuals. They have a love for learning, and we want to inspire them to learn, grow, and achieve greatness. Now you'll get to hear from some of our faculty, staff, students, and parents on why they feel like Cottle Creek is the best place to be.
This is Jordan, our instructional facilitator. What makes Cottle Creek so awesome?
Well, you know, probably, I think one thing Cottle Creek is so awesome is the staff. They're dedicated, they're passionate, and they really want to support the kids. We've got awesome families. And I think the students, it's exciting to see them taking ownership for their own learning and just getting passionate about the things they're interested in and the things they're inquiring about. It's a great place to be.
So, in three words, best school ever. Staff, administration, teachers, custodian, and PTO. We love everything about Cottle Creek. We moved here from West Virginia two years ago, and we couldn't be more happy with all of the staff and teachers and children and the school itself. It's amazing.
Come on, Daddy. I love Cottle Creek. I love working here because of the people. Everybody is so nice and so warm and friendly. It's just warmed my heart, and I thank God that he placed me in this school.
Awesome things about Cottle Creek. The staff, very supportive. As a parent or as a staff person myself, I find them very responsive and interested in anything that I have to say as a parent or as a fellow staff.
Say, every staff member here at CCE really, really cares about the students here. They strive for them to do their best, no matter what level they are on. I just think that it's a wonderful school. It's a beautiful building, and it's kept up nicely. I can't... Our PTO is wonderful. They go up and beyond.
I'm here with a group of students from Cottle Creek, and they want to share with you why Cottle Creek is so awesome.
I like the way the teachers are nice and you can make friends really easily.
And they make learning fun.
And when you come here, you feel like you're so welcomed, and all the people treat you with respect, and teachers show you around. It's really fun here.
And people, like, whenever you come here, everybody feels like family, and you get to learn Spanish.
And it's really easy... There are some things that will challenge you, but some things you might already know. It depends whenever you get here.
I like that you guys included Spanish because it's reteaching me because before I lived in Paraguay before I came here. So I learned it fluently, but I forgot it a little bit. So this is like reteaching me.
Cottle Creek is an awesome place to be because we create thinkers.
Cottle Creek creates a community of thinkers and people who care about learning and are committed to being excellent people, just not inside the classroom, but outside the classroom.
Now, obviously, we don't have time tonight to show you a clip from every school, but I think that's not bad for a bunch of amateurs. We're not a Wall Street or Park Avenue marketing firm yet, but we're doing a pretty darn good job, and I'm real proud of our staff and our principals that are out there marketing their schools. And unfortunately, we live in a day and an age where you have to do that. But I thought you might enjoy to see, just to take a little glimpse at some of our marketing videos. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. A few announcements. March fifteenth is early release day, and March thirty-first is a regular school day. I hope everybody... That is a snow makeup day. April third is our next committee of a whole meeting at ADR, and April tenth, we'll be back here for our Board of Education meeting. Any other dates that we need to be aware of?
Monday... Monday night, your meeting.
Well, Monday night is one of our strategic partners. Child Evangelism Fellowship is going to be six o'clock at the Civic Center, so if you're available that night, please come join us. Ms. Hayes is going to be there. Mr. Gannon is coming. We've got a table for eight, so join us if you can.
Can I ask that the opportunities that we had that you had up here, could maybe put in our updates so we'll know when they are and where they are?
Oh, yes. Absolutely.
So if you want to make choices, be right in front of us.
Yes.
Thank you.
I believe you shared a calendar with us. Is this stuff being put in the calendar?
Yeah, it was on a...
It will be.
Yes, it will be. Very good. Thank you.
I'd like to add, North Iredale Capital Group's reverse rifle is on April twenty-seventh. So if you have an opportunity to get that, support them. They work with the school system in meeting their needs with the students at their facilities.
April twenty-seventh on Friday or Saturday?
That's a Thursday.
Thursday.
At Civic Center.
Civic Center.
Civic Center.
Civic Center, yes, in Statesville. Six o'clock.
Any other dates or anything? Any other comments? At this time, we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
No closed session?
No close...